Well then, if you would like to bow your heads and join me in prayer. Heavenly Father, thank you for the privilege of coming to you in prayer. Thank you for the guidance and the direction that you give us in your holy word. We thank you for that, for the Holy Spirit. And we just pray that you would be with us in this meeting tonight. Guide and direct us, help us to make good decisions. In your most holy name we pray, amen.
Amen.
And here's Mike. Hello, Mike.
Hello.
Good to see you. Did you want to see the bills? Megan will be here tonight. She's helping her boys set up pig pens at Fair Browns. I didn't realize that those buildings are just a big open building all year. And when someone uses them, they set up their own pens or whatever they might need in order to do their stuff. So, oh, I guess last night they set up the pig pens. Tonight they're decorated because the pigs get decorated with pens with signs for their groups and stuff. And then she'll be at the fair next week. That was a nice ring we got.
Definitely needed that.
No trouble. The chamber got better. Getting the ball back on.
You don't want to want it? Oh, well then you've had a good ear.
Did you run a test one third?
Yeah, crystal.
Oh, I guarantee you it's made for that stuff. That blade is made for it.
I'm going to talk it.
The blade said for body.
I used one of those things on it.
So rare that are laminate or for that file.
And then I've got two.
It might have said laminate because laminate does have bigger teeth on it.
I've never had any issues with it, but.
Yeah.
You said you've never really done that. Have I changed that or is it?
Not like those things I have. I've done vinyl before with that saw.
Okay. I've never had one.
She would do it like nothing. Didn't tear it up. He'd just go through it slow.
I'm also turning off not to like the front. There are triggers. It might take me, I've had two hours to finish to get to like with the front. Before I, I'm taking a lot. I'm wearing a wall. It was in one of those keynotes that.
Did you carry through the closets and all that stuff?
Yeah, I opened the wall. They don't shop Big Red anymore. I don't even trip places later.
Yeah. I think that's what we end up doing.
Five or six rows from like the door to where everything's done. That was, I had a blue or something. They were kind of in the, in the green, kind of in the center of the food court area.
I've seen it.
That was our house.
I thought maybe, yeah. My husband used to do streaming talent for it. Okay, we will call the meeting to order now at 7:00 PM. Let's have the pledge of allegiance. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Devin, would you take roll call, please?
Here.
Ted Bullitt?
Here.
Mandy Yalobit?
Here.
Mary Never?
Here.
Howard?
Here.
Steve Wallace?
Here.
Mayor Swigman?
Here.
And now the reading and approval of the minutes of our last meeting, which was July 21st.
I move that the agenda be adopted as printed.
I'm sorry I skipped that part. I do that all the time. Good job, Chad.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion to approve the agenda as printed. Motion from Chad, seconded by Larry. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Now, we're going to have reading and approval of the minutes of the July 21st meeting.
I move that we suspend the rules, waive the reading, and approve the minutes from the July 21, 22 regular meeting.
Second.
Motion from Bob, seconded by Steve, to waive the reading and approve the minutes from the July 21st meeting. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Do we have any pre-approved reports? I don't think we have anybody here for that. Any comments from the public? Alex, did you want to make any comments from the public? Okay then. Communications, Devin.
I just want to make a note and verify that council received summary of actions from board review.
Yes. Yes.
And that's all we have for correspondence, huh?
Thank you. Bob, I did check into the Old News Boys. Yep, and they are in Durant.
Okay.
I've printed this and you're welcome to take that if you want. But I've also talked to the Eagles Club in Owasso, which is where they function through. And he referred me to Durant.
Okay.
And I've tried to call there twice. They don't have a voicemail and there wasn't any answer either time I called. But from things I've seen online and on their website, the Durant website for the Old News Boys, it looks to me like they've got things set up to do something already in the fall. And again, I can try to keep reaching her if you want me to.
Sure, if you can see fund them.
I did, yeah. And if you want to give me that back page, I'll keep trying to call her and see if they want to come over here or if they would like to do that. I just wanted you to know that I did.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I just wanted to relay too to everybody that we had a couple of different people who are on staff at Woodholt Township Hall express their appreciation for our City Hall staff assisting them because they're all temporary fill-in kind of people. And Shirley went over one day and helped teach them how to do BSNA software. And Devin did quite a bit to help them get through their election properly. And so they expressed their appreciation and us allowing them to go and do that. So thank you for that. And now we'll move on to committee report. Oh, I'm sorry, department head reports. Gosh, I almost skipped right over those. Who wants to go first?
John's closest.
John?
I don't have a great deal. You will notice in the bills that ENO contractors as part of it were paying, we've subtracted from the amount of the original contract, $25,000 at the request of the engineers because of the overage until we can negotiate what's, what we're going to be doing. So that's why it's 195 instead of 220. I mean, I'm busy. It's just the mundane stuff of public works, so.
John is measuring sidewalks. You see them out there measuring. We're trying to get a good measurement on our linear feet of sidewalks because there's a legislative grant where at least one city has applied to use that money for sidewalks to the tune of, what did I tell you? $750,000. And our grant writer, James Hisson, said, let's get, let's do that. Let's apply. I said, yeah, let's do that. He said, well, can we get a number? And I said, John, can we get a number? And he said, well, I'll have to measure all the sidewalks. So then I hustled him doing that.
So I should have, if I get a square foot price, something to James to start tomorrow afternoon or something.
Oh, that'd be great. Super. Thank you. And since you're right there, Megan gave us a report on the, on the bills, which you'll see if you haven't looked at them already, that now we're paying the bill for the water tower project in the bills today. So I just asked her if she would give us an idea how that money, that there is, first of all, that there is money in there to pay that because we don't usually have bills that big in our monthly bills. And how that would happen versus general fund versus the water fund. So she did print that up. And then she also gave us a treasures report on OPEP funds and mentioned that the CD that's been holding that money now for a while is maturing next week, so that'll be moved around. So if you have questions, feel free to contact her this week though, because she'll be out next week for the fair, as I mentioned earlier. She also gave us, no, this was, this was from you, right? She did give us the City of Perry retiree medical plan accounting report as well. I'm sorry?
That's the actual actuary report.
The actual actuary report.
It's like reading the audit, guys. Enjoy it. So Megan's got a good handle of it. If you have questions, she should be able to explain it pretty easy for you.
Yep, not me. Okay, Kyle.
Good evening to everybody. I finally have decals on the new car. It took forever and a day, but they accommodated my pickings and I got the right color on there that I wanted printed. So they're very great people to work with and great gazebo did a nice job of printing and installing the decals for us. Nationally, now it was Tuesday and I have really no complaints. I think it went well. The weather was great. I will say the turnout was rather light, I thought. But thanks to the mayor and Ron, we had hot dogs all night long, so.
Ron counted them. He grilled 150 hot dogs.
Yes, he was quite busy for summer hours.
He was just in heaven.
Yeah. Yep, he did great. Other than that, business as usual. I talked about the tower coming up, but I've been working on some stuff with that.
Any other questions for Kyle?
All right, thank you.
Devin?
Not a lot to talk about. Maybe I just take it for granted, but the election, of course, was Tuesday night, Long Island National Night Out. 419 voters that came out. My experience is a good primary is between 400 to 600. So we were still in the lower end. We did have lots of good traffic all day and just died out in the end. So I figured we were, I estimated that we would have seen 500, but we were short of that. Our absentee voting is increasing though. We had 156 ballots that were turned in like absentee. And I also want to let you know that there are proposals, resolutions that you had passed for the November election. One was the McQueen House Fund, the Parks Fund, the sale of the property. And the last one was the charter amendments. The deadline is August 16th. They have all been electronically sent to the county whip and she has received them. So that should be all on there. Of course, any of the seats, council and mayor seats will also be on the next November. And then the last thing I wanted to share is it will be September 29th. If anybody isn't a permanent AB and would like to vote absentee is when the actual ballots will have to be in my office. I usually receive them about four days prior due to military overseas, but I'm going to give you the date, the 29th, because the county is allowed to have a few days to get the physical ballots to my office, so. Any questions about the election? I had one person that was in, that wanted to know about poll watching and thought that we trained them and that's not the case. There are rules of what a poll watcher can do and not do. And so I offered resident a copy of those rules. Mandy did a great job as usual. She was one of our election workers and we just had fabulous election workers. It was a great night.
Any questions for Devin? No? Okay. You did get, I think, a copy of the July board review summary of actions taken. We'll just leave that with you. And move to committee reports.
Just a real quick one. The ordinance committee did meet last Thursday and we have drafted a rewrite of the marijuana ordinance as well as a proposed rewrite of provisions to the zoning ordinance. Those are currently awaiting city attorney to feedback at this point in time. They're, they've been sent to John, Justin English for his review and critique. So hopefully we may have something back for discussion at the next council meeting. And just a reminder, the next ordinance committee meeting is right now scheduled for Thursday, the 25th of this month at 10:00 AM here in council chambers.
Any questions for Larry? No? All righty. Any other committee reports? Okay, moving on. Presentation on approval of the bills.
I move that we approve the bills as presented and that payment be authorized.
Second.
Mike?
Move by Steve and seconded by Mike to approve the bills presented and payment be authorized. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. We're moving to old business, which there is none, so we'll move on to new business. Possible purchase approval of variable frequency drive for well number four, John.
Okay, so this, let's see, well one and well three I've replaced a little over two years ago in anticipation of the water tower project. So this one is 14 years old, life expectancy 10 to 14, 15, around the tail end of it. But I have two of the wells, so don't. And I, I kept the old drives from the other tube that an electrician could wire in in a pinch. But I think it's time. It's starting to make some noise in the cooling fan, so. Go ahead mechanical works with Northern Pump and Well, one of our well, drillers and outfits that we use. We also use Peerless Midwest, but sometimes I like to leap my foot in more than one door. So that's what's in front of you now. They let me go ahead and go direct to their contract guy to purchase this because they're so busy, so.
Any questions for John?
Go ahead's going to install it, right?
Yes. He was out when we had the power outages and we had some issues with restarts and helped me get the other drives programmed so they would restart. So he's already been out here.
Familiar with it?
Familiar with our system a little bit. So it's not like he's coming in blind and not ever worked with well, well fields and that type of stuff.
Any other discussion?
I move that we accept an authorized payment not to exceed $4,550 to Go Ahead Mechanical for purchase of variable frequency drive for well number four.
Second. We have a motion by Mike, seconded by Chad in regard to purchasing the, whatever that is.
VFD.
Okay. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Okay, you got your thing, didn't you?
Thanks.
Discussion regarding Chiwasi tornado siren project. Kyle and Larry attended a Zoom meeting with other county people and they're going to tell us how that went.
So I think most everybody has probably heard me speak of this project in the past, but just in case, or just to refresh, I was a part of a small committee group from the 911 board probably four to five years ago with a previous emergency manager for Chiwasi County. And we started the discussion of installing some automation into the current tornado sirens throughout Chiwasi County so that they could all be activated by central dispatch. Right now, they are all independently operated. So the City of Perry's two tower, siren towers are triggered by radio signal by the fire department. Other municipalities and other townships that have towers have to do theirs however they have it set up. The company that retrofitted and added the second tower siren for the City of Perry is called Westshore. I believe they're out of Allegan, Michigan, but they have a corner on the market nationwide and probably beyond. Actually, in fact, I know, well, I don't know, but they're, they're big and they're broad and they do a fantastic job at what they do. We had a meeting the other day with the 911 director, current emergency manager, a gentleman who's contracted with Westshore and then Larry and I. They have deemed our tower that we own here back behind Public Works to be the most feasible site to put on a transmitter and trigger all of the sirens with this project that we've been looking to do. There's a little bit of a gray area up by New Waltha and they might have to do something different up there, but for the most part, they show really good coverage for Chiwasi County utilizing our tower. So the complexities get into, we own it, but we lease to American Tower and they have their own requirements for what they, what equipment they have on their tower. We can't interfere with that. We don't want to interfere with that, but I don't believe that Westshore would be pushing this if they thought that their 20 pound antenna was going to interfere with any antenna cellular or whatever on that tower that's nearly 400 feet up. So what we were looking for out of this meeting was the next step. And so that's kind of the rough details of what we've talked about in the past. Thankfully, I do, I do have to say, the City of Perry has been on top of our siren. And we are ready to go for this new system to be added. We don't have to retrofit hardly anything that I am aware of. Westshore made sure we were up to date with everything, so when this gets triggered, our sirens would just automatically get set up. So I'm glad to say that. I think the City of Owasso might have one or two that are ready to go. I'm not sure if all of them are, but I don't know of any others that are ready to go. So the other municipalities and townships would have to retrofit and add the receiver side of this to their towers so that they could be triggered with what we're looking to add to our antenna. I think that's pretty much the, the broad view, the broad discussion that we've had so far. Larry, if you want to talk about any details?
Devin had a question, looks like.
I never asked you about this, is, is everybody, all municipalities on board?
No.
No?
No. So what's going to happen? Is it the counties? No?
Okay.
No.
All right.
It's up to there, not to them.
Well, that's good to know. I just wasn't sure.
There's no mandate, but I think they're ridiculous if they don't.
Yeah. No, I agree.
Why would you not? Where we're going so far is to say, if you don't have a tower on this location, you need to have it. And here's the cost.
Okay.
There's a lot of money from last year that's out there and people are wondering how to spend it. I know several townships are. I think this would be a fantastic project and we should add several tornado sirens throughout Chiwasi County to protect it. So if they want to retrofit and jump on board with what the county is willing to invest in this, all the better. But there's no requirement, no mandate, but I think their, the public, their citizens should go to their boards and demand it, quite honestly. There are enough people that are injured or killed in severe weather situations that there's no reason that they don't participate.
Kyle and I are in agreement that it's a good thing for the city to pursue in terms of trying to move the best base forward for the county. I did make, both of us made it clear on that Zoom call, if whatever we do is a city that supports it, at the end of the day, it's cost neutral to us. We're not out to make any money from it, but we don't want to incur any expenses. And I think that really the next couple of steps are that I wanted to have some discussion here that would say, does the council support the next steps? Which really the next step would be to have Justin English, our city attorney, look at the contract that we have, that the city has with American Tower and see if there are any roadblocks or obstacles to us permitting a transmitter to be placed on the tower. And then also, one of the questions that did surface that at first blush, American Tower says they want to have, would demand a structural review of the tower to see whether it would support the equipment. As Kyle mentioned, it's a white flag stick of 20 pounds. So hopefully we'd be able to negotiate our way through that if the contract with American Tower allows for it. Really, I think coming out of here today is to say, do we want to, as a council, support further investigation with American Tower, ultimately leading, if contract allows it, leading to a discussion with American Tower to see if we can get through any roadblocks or obstacles that would preclude using our site for that transmitter.
Who activates it?
It would be through central dispatch, which is always manned. There's always somebody there. I can tell you, and this is not against any fire department at all, but there are people that are, when there's severe weather in the area, they're out looking for the storms and they're not necessarily available all the time to trigger that siren. So no matter where they're at. So I don't know the range on the radio or any of those details. The police department has not been a part of that process. But I think this is the most feasible protection we can provide, given the space that we have in Chiwasi County, but also just, just knowing that there's somebody on the other end of that severe weather warning, whether it's tornado or storms, that can push that button on the computer. And any of the dispatchers would be able to do that.
How does dispatch get notified?
I would think it'd be through the national. I would think it'd be through the National Weather Service.
That's my thought, just.
There had been some talk, just so you know, that one, one trigger on the button might not activate all of them. It might just be the path of the storm kind of thing. I don't know how detailed the information that is coming into dispatch is to be able to do that, but there has been some discussion about that. So if we got a storm down here that's going southeast, New Walthorpe might not get that warning up there or similar circumstances if it were going from our south. It may activate all, just to be safe, I don't know.
That makes sense.
Yeah, there's, there's lots of discussion we've had about the details and nuances of what this looks like.
Devin, do you have any issues?
No, I think, I think we.
If it gets going forward to at least pursue, you know, what legal roadblocks or obligations we might have with American Tower.
Anything to speed up the split second decision for the tornado? They probably looked across the street from when they hit and they had like two seconds from the time the siren went off and the tornado hit.
Yeah.
So it's.
And our location in the county is not ideal because we're looking at a countywide, we're on the west side. The storms generally come from the west, so we'll take anything we can get as far as advance notice and advance warning.
Absolutely.
Okay, so I'm working with Sue and Devin to reach out to Justin and see what applications we've, we've got or what we can do in terms of latitude of American Tower.
Definitely.
Thank you.
And Justin, you would stay with her because we're gonna talk about siren volume and I've talked with John about this too. Feel free to chime in here, but. I, I know, my hearing isn't what it used to be, but I really have trouble hearing our siren. I do, and if I'm in the house and the TV's on and the door shut, I don't hear it. My mother used to live over on Burton Road in Burton Pine's apartments. One day when they were testing it, I had her stand at the patio door with the door open and said, okay, the siren's going off. Can you hear that now? And she said, I don't hear a thing. I mean, I could barely hear it, but her hearing, while she was 88, but she couldn't hear it at all. So I asked a few of our council members and Larry indicated he had difficulty hearing it. So anyway, I did ask John and I looped Guy in on that inquiry, Chief Hubbard, about what we can do to change that. Do you wanna tell us what you found out?
So there, the volume is at max. The newest one from 2012 at the end of White Oak and the old one, I mean, it just cranks up and goes. Part of the, so I've got documentation back to 2000, okay? A siren, in this plan, it called for one up on Rolfe and Watkins. More than likely by the elementary schools who maintenance garage, I don't know exactly. 12 years later, it was put over at the end of White Oak. Same company, this is on Westshore. I've got maps of, you know, the radiuses of the alarm. I don't know how much you want to know, I'll just show them to you real quick. You can see them. The existing, it was the existing one. Was over by the maintenance, the DPW, and then they were projecting a new one up here, but that ended up getting put over here. So it's kind of in a straight line and I don't know why. I think part of the problem was who's gonna pay the electric bill? So, cause that's a school property.
The old one was failing, John, was one of the reasons why they, the old one was failing is why they put it in the same area. I do remember that. But it was still working, but it, so they kept it, they figured it didn't hurt. If it, whenever it did work fine, but it wasn't dependable. And then after that, I don't know why we didn't pursue with like what you're saying on the future part of it.
In 2019, I found that the new one, someone had thrown the disconnect, the batteries went dead over the winter and it wasn't operational. So we spent almost $3,000 on both of them, getting new radios, receivers between them so they would communicate so that the fire department could sound them both off because in the past, I think someone had to go.
We had to go in the building and do it.
And then that changed it all. So there's new antennas out there. As far as I know, the old one, at this point in time, there is nothing wrong with it. But I do have Westshore coming out on August 15th to do a check on both, a maintenance check and it's about due. So that'll get posted because last time I had them out and I sound, they sounded them, the school was in session and they freaked out on us, so it was something that I didn't foresee. So that's what I know about the alarms.
So we'll, we'll post that, that it's gonna be tested, we'll put it on all the places that we have available to put it.
That was the only day she could give me that they would be here.
Yeah, no, that's.
But I'm gonna wait closer to it before we do because I'll, they'll check next week to make sure that.
Is there others in the area besides these two? Does anybody know?
I don't know that. I think there's only two.
Really?
There's only one down here at the DPW hall and the one in White Oak. I think that's the only two sirens that we actually have in the city.
Well, in proximity of the city.
I don't think Perry Township has one either, Kyle.
I don't believe they do. No, I can get a map, I can get those details. I know that we've had this discussion of where they are and where they need to be, but.
I'm just curious. I don't think the village has one in Morris.
No. In 2000, I know about this study, the actual best location, coverage was the junior high school, which at that time, the high school had just been built. So the junior high school was the best location for overlap. I don't know why they went to the one in White Oak, I guess maybe the better coverage.
They felt that at the time the other one was gonna fail, so they thought one.
So they're very close in proximity.
That's what they said, I mean, and again, they were able to get it to work and fix it, but they were, they weren't confident that it was gonna last. But it has, I mean, it's just an extra one.
I live on the northeast side and I can't hear it either. So that's why they were gonna put one on the junior high and I, but it was cost prohibitive at that time. It was 130,000, I think.
Yeah, they're nowhere close to that, no.
That was back 22 years ago, there was 130 or 140,000.
Do you have any idea?
More or less.
What's the ballpark?
Way less.
Oh, really?
You're talking between probably 20 to 40,000 dollars to, to actually put the tower up. Isn't, do you recall that, Larry? I thought they said that in the meeting.
I forget the exact number, but.
I, I have 22,000 stuck in my head, but.
20 to 30,000 to put a new tower.
Potentially, depending on the location, yeah. And that's the tower and everything, so it's not even like the tower exists or they have to use a tower that is already there and put this on the top of it. That's the whole structure.
And we wouldn't need anything structure-wise, we would just need the new alarm, correct? Am I?
Well, if you want to.
We should have a structure.
Oh, that's right, if we change the location, you're right.
If we added a location.
Yeah. Does anybody know what the responsibility of the county is to have sirens?
No.
Yeah, I moved, Old County, Old County had them, I mean, I had one within a mile of my house. About every mile, there miles, two miles, five, or whatever it was, it wasn't that far.
I, I think the responsibility falls on the individual municipality first before it falls on the broader county. I think one of the issues we're running into with ours is our, they're, they're made for distance. They're made to capture as much area as possible and I think we're, have this umbrella effect and I think we're, the people that are in the city are inside that umbrella and it's projecting all past them and that's why the bulk of the sound isn't hitting the city. Now, Westshore could come in and say, that's not the design and they're wrong, but in my, I have heard our siren from my house and I'm over six miles away and you're telling me three blocks away, you're not hearing it.
Right.
So to me, there's a, a range factor of what they're trying to hit and I think it's a shooting over top of us and sound has that ability to do that, so.
So John, when you talk to Westshore, can you ask them about that, same thing that Kyle just talked about, the umbrella effect?
Yeah, yeah.
And the other piece along with that, our person's sound levels that they would expect to get, like at Steve's house, that we say we can't hear ourselves or hearing impaired, you first commit that to me, but there should be some number of decibels or whatever that if they're standing in somebody's front yard.
Yeah, so the new one that's over by the water tower at Jubilee Park, that one at 100 foot is 130 decibels. At 6,400 feet away, you have like a 70 decibel still. They were, from what I read, I don't think this, it was supposed to do about four square miles. You know, are trees gonna have a factor, is wind?
Correct. Right, right.
You know.
Be interesting to have them do some, whether here's some sound checks in the area that they, those are the specs in terms of what we should get. Is that really what the city residents are seeing?
Are the birds hearing it or are the people on the ground hearing it?
But I think based on what I've read, we, we, we need another one. That, that was the first priority back in 2000, is to put it on, on that end of town. Or I'll call it that quarter, I'm, you know, just reading it and that was from Westshore. So if the other one, I mean, we've done work on it, but it's been maintenance, pretty maintenance-free for a long time.
Sure.
I mean, it's, it's old, but it still works. We, we did all that maintenance on it, I'm having them come back out, do a health check. But the guy from Westshore is in Alaska right now doing more towers or sirens, so. Someone will get back to me, it's just not like.
Can you indulge council and get, just get a quote on another tower while they're here? Just get a quote.
Yeah, just see what's, uh, something similar to that, just a rotating one that. I mean, I, they do make some more powerful, I don't know if they're in the specs, but this is just for the one we got, but there's, there's some bigger ones that make more noise.
But, but why would we want to do that when if we could just add one?
Sure.
At a reduced rate.
Just like the one that's on White Oak.
Correct. Okay.
It is weird because I can hear it at my house on Burton Road.
Then we're in between, yeah.
Isn't that weird?
Yeah. Well, it depends on which way, when it's more, some days we do it, some days we don't.
You're also the furthest council person from the towers.
Yeah.
So that kind of goes along with what you're saying as far as it.
That's my theory, I could be completely wrong.
Just tell them, point it out.
Right, once, yeah, or have it, you know, it's a, I don't know.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, if it's doing like this, it might be just over my house, down at your house. Okay, so John will look into that, Kyle's gonna check on, what were you checking on?
We're, we're referring this to the city attorney at this point, to make sure that we can pursue it.
You were also gonna report back to us and tell us where other towers in this area are.
Yeah, I can get that now, yeah, I can probably get that to you before the next meeting.
Oh, that's okay, well, by next meeting, we'll be fine. So we'll put this on the agenda to visit whatever else we have to look at, but I would expect, just from my conversation with James Hissong, the legislative grants are covering a broad spectrum of things to do with the money. So sidewalks, sirens, I think we could throw it all in there and see what sticks. Any other discussion you'd like to have about sirens, towers, volume, anything?
Probably I have at some point some clarity, cause I know the siren sounded when we had the tornado, or excuse me, had the severe thunderstorm warning.
Yesterday.
Yesterday and it was, is it a tornado warning? Are we using the siren for severe thunderstorm warnings?
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't, my wife thought it was a tornado warning and everybody in the basement.
I was seeing funnels on those clouds, I would have, I would have guessed potential.
I didn't know if they did it, I wasn't home, but I didn't know they did it for severe thunderstorms.
I think they do.
We do know.
My point is, is we.
Forward tone or something.
What time was that?
It was like 10 to 4, cause I was literally talking to my daughter saying, where are you at?
I didn't even hear it, so there you go.
They'll do three different warnings.
It went off as, as I was talking to my daughter.
Let me have your beeps outside on the edge of her neck watching the, the clouds roll in as she said, the sirens going off. So my point being, as we go forward, we have to clarify and communicate for residents if there are different tones for severe thunderstorm warning versus a tornado warning. Now, how are we actually using it as a city?
Some are all clear, there's also all clear.
Yeah.
But we should, like you said, we should notify our residents, again, it is the storm season. You know, put it on the website, Dr. Carl Olson.
I didn't, I annoyed her they did it for three, I'm sure.
Like he was a tester.
And a tester also.
And the tester, well, yeah, we almost.
Well, the test is, the test is every Saturday at the beginning of the month, every Saturday.
Even during the hurricane.
Right.
And I just said I could hear it at my house, but I didn't hear it yesterday.
It was really windy though, it was ridiculously windy.
Are we done discussing sirens and such? Anything else? Okay, we'll move on then to possible adoption of ordinance amendment number 363 regarding nuisance abatement.
Questions at the car?
We had our first reading last time, yeah.
I feel I'm about to leave.
I move that ordinance number 363, which amends, since I may guess now, I move that ordinance number 364. I move that ordinance number 363, which amends nuisance abatement events and which was read at the July 21st, 2022, council meeting be adopted.
Second.
We have a motion from Mike, seconded by Steve. All those in favor of that motion regarding amendment number 363 being approved, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay.
Nay.
Devin, would you do a roll call, please?
Mindy Gellwold, yes. Larry Lambert?
Yes.
Bob Porter?
No.
Steve Wallace?
Yes.
Mike Connell?
Yes.
Tim Fuller?
Yes.
I have to one, it's motion through.
Motion passes. Moving on then to possible adoption of ordinance amendment number 364 regarding ORVs.
I move that ordinance number 364, which repeals and amends the ORV ordinance, which was read at the July 21st, 2022, council meeting be adopted.
Second. We have a motion made by Larry, seconded by Bob, regarding approval of ordinance number 364. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Is there any other business to come before council at this time? Anyone who's come in for public comment? Council discussions or observations? Any agenda items for the next meeting?
Mayor, I put on Chiwasi tornado siren project and then the second one, I put discussion of new siren being at the volume.
discussion of new siren, being that the volume is what category you discuss, is that okay?
Yes, that's good.
We'll hear back from Justin in time, talk about the younger one, ordinance rewrites.
Anything else? It's 7:47, 7:45, excuse me, and the meeting is adjourned.